Be blessed Rocky Mount and give us the strength during this uncertain time. We ask that whatever we do in our lives, we do to your honor and to your glory. And God bless this time we have together to do this business of your people for your people. In your name we pray. Amen.
Yeah, I see clerk to Rockwell.
Counselor number nine.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Here.
Walker.
Yeah.
Daughtry.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Miller.
Here.
Okay, great. I'd like to tell her you're welcome very well if you're watching us live streaming and like to thank counsel member Walker and Miller for joining us electronically. As you can tell, we are practicing social distancing here and I encourage you to do the same thing at home as we go forward. With that said, I'll bring item number four before the council, which is the approval of minutes of a special call of city council meeting on March 19th and a regular scheduled meeting of the city council held March 23rd, both of 2020. Recommended action is to approve.
Seven.
Second. Motion made by counsel Miller, second by Joyner. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item five is consideration of minutes and recommendations from a special call committee of the whole meeting held March 19th, 2020. Did we just do that? That's all right. Well, okay. Update cities response to COVID-19, city manager Rochelle Smalltoni, discussion and direction to the city manager. And that was already covered in item four, I believe. So at this time, so moving to have a motion from Knight, second from.
The floor of the council meeting that happened at five, this meeting level.
All right. Knight, move. Second. Joyner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay. At this point, city manager has asked that we remove item seventeen and councilman Daughtry has asked that we table 2021. So manager, anything you want to add to that?
No, sir.
Okay. Counselman Daughtry, is there any reason you want to add for 2021?
Well, I have a concern. I think we need to consult the UNC School of Government and our attorneys in the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Main Street regarding these grants that we offer, not just these that are coming in front of us. I've derived this from the 2017 UNC School of Government, Tyler Boglum, who wrote, "When state constitutions across the nation were written, they included gift clauses to ensure that state and local governments did not make gifts to private entities. In North Carolina, a local government isn't even allowed to make a donation to a charitable nonprofit entity. A local government can enter into a contract and pay a reasonable price for a valuable public service, such as a contract to manage a homeless shelter, but the government cannot make a donation." And then just this year, Mulligan wrote in the UNC School of Government, "The North Carolina Constitution allows governments to grant cash or property to individuals or businesses for private development only in very limited circumstances, such as affordable housing for low-income persons," and it references Section 4, Article 11, the North Carolina Constitution, "or to provide business location incentives when necessary to attract substantial job creation and tax base that might otherwise be lost to other states." And that references a case, Merity versus City of Winston-Salem in 1996. That is a high bar. Private facade improvements is important, but it doesn't meet those standards set in case law. Currently, there is no holding in North Carolina constitutional law, nor have researchers identified precedent from other states with similar constitutional provisions that upholds making cash payments to induce private owners to invest in their own property for the purpose of private facade improvements or private revitalization. This does not prevent a government from accomplishing its facade improvements and downtown revitalization goals. It simply means the government should use other tools described in his post, and I can provide that to anyone.
I'll let you do that. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask a attorney if he would.
Please.
Address that in our city manager before we move forward.
Well, I'll need to look at these extra city rules. I have a look. If you have questions, I'll clear them out.
Well, I guess we were asking.
We're just asking to table this until the next meeting to allow those questions to be answered by our city attorney.
City manager, you have any?
Well, I would be curious to be a part of that discussion because I know that in many communities, even in North Carolina, where these kinds of incentives are used to incent private owners to invest in their properties. And so I don't, you know, I'm surprised to hear that there may be some constitutionality around this because it's been pretty standard, I know, in many cities throughout North Carolina and really throughout the country. As a matter of fact, I think I've at least had the opinion that we were behind the curve as opposed to being in front of the curve, that we're starting now to do the same kinds of things that even our neighboring cities have been doing for many years. Also, I think you have to look at the outcomes of these incentives. And I know that since being here for now, over two and a half years, I'm starting to see these incentives to really incent people to do the kinds of things that we want them to do to revitalize the downtown. So I would be curious that if this is taken away, I don't know what would be substituted because it takes capital, it takes a lot of capital to bring those buildings back in the downtown area. So if the city isn't standing there, you know, helping, not, I mean, $10,000 really is not a lot of money when people are making millions and millions of dollars of investments in some of these, some of these places. But certainly, I'd be very interested in hearing more about the constitutionality piece of it.
And just like I said. So we, seventeen, city manager has recommended we remove that from the agenda.
No, not the city manager.
City manager.
You recommended that?
No, seventeen is about the third party collection. That's, that's what I'm recommending.
No, seventeen, not twenty-one.
That's right. Seventeen, right. I just want to do it at one at a time since obviously we have some discussion. Perhaps, perhaps we'll keep the agenda as it is, we'll get to twenty, and then we'll talk about tabling at that time.
Tabling is a vote.
It is, that's right.
Right.
Okay. That work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Item six, community update, city manager.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Several updates for you. Of course, today was a, not the best in terms of weather. We did have outages that lasted really from 6:45 a.m. through 2:00 p.m. There were a total number of customers that lost power, was approximately 2,300. The peak time for outages was between 8:45 a.m. through 9:45 a.m. with approximately 1,400 customers without power during this time. The longest sustained outage was on Old Level Road at the intersection of South Halifax Road. The outage lasted from 6:45 a.m. through 9:30 a.m. and affected 97 customers. All power was restored by 2:00 this afternoon. In terms of just a update for you regarding the federal COVID-19 stimulus funding for the city of Rocky Mount, as of today, we're hearing that we have been authorized $4,798,801 in federal appropriations for services related to the COVID-19 event. The overwhelming majority of that amount, $4,367,324, is for our transit system from the FTA to the Tower River Transit for continuation of our rural and urban transit operations. No state or local matching funds are required. In terms of community development, $309,806 will be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to the city of Rocky Mount under a special allocation through the CDBG program. No local matching funds are required. Public safety will receive $121,771 from the U.S. Department of Justice to the Rocky Mount Police Department through an emergency supplemental funding program. No. In terms of just 5% of eligible cost in the state of North Carolina may provide the remaining 25% reimbursement. All utility disconnections until further notice and late fees will not be assessed during this time. If you are struggling and need help with your bill, please contact the business services center. I would like to remind you, if you can, stay home and know that during this pandemic, the city of Rocky Mount is working to ensure you continue to receive excellent municipal services. To highlight the incredible work of our employees are still during, during this time of uncertainty, we have launched our City of Work campaign, which incorporates the thank you signs residents have placed in their yard, whether answering customer calls, collecting garbage, repairing a line, or responding to various postings on the city's Facebook site. If you have not done so, please fill out and send in your 2020 census form. In March, you should have received your form in the mail. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. For more information or to respond, visit 2020census.gov. Finally, to ensure our citizens are well informed of the latest information regarding the coronavirus pandemic, the city of Rocky Mount has launched a Citizens Resource Center on our website. There are a number of local, state, federal agencies and organizations providing exceptional services and assistance during this pandemic. And this information can be found in a centralized place on our website to streamline the way citizens can access the information only and will be updated as new initiatives and news becomes available. Citizens should contact organizations or businesses directly for additional information. We encourage citizens to access this site to stay informed of all the assistance available to our community. That concludes my update.
Thank you. Any questions for manager? Counselman Daughtry.
Madam manager, on the utilities that Governor Cooper weighed in as well, Order 124 requires Rocky Mount to send to the Utilities Commission a weekly report. And as you know, I ask for a weekly report, and I request that the city council mayor be included on that report as well. And if you can add the information that was previously presented to us on a weekly basis, I ask for that as well.
Okay, certainly. And I just received that information this afternoon, so I'll review it in the morning and make sure you get it.
Thank you. Counselwoman, Miller, do you have something?
I think, Ms.
My question pertains to the collection of yard waste and bulk items. I understand that the streets crew, we're all in, our environmental services workers help those collections, but would not be collected consistently? And I just wanted to know what would be able to tell my constituents.
Well, they're, they're really not being used to augment. They're, they're being used to substitute for. What, what's happening here in terms of the operations is that in order for us to comply with the stay-at-home order, we have to rotate crews in and out. So the streets crews are being used in this rotation so that, you know, the, the staff can adhere to that mandate. So it's not like, you know, we're adding street crews to environmental services. They're being rotated in and out. And of course, that does slow down the process for collection. I would say to have people to continue to put their yard waste on the curb, we certainly will get it. But when you're in a pandemic crisis like we're in, where we have, you know, the normal operations of the city is not normal, if you will, I don't think it's normal in any city across the country. But just have them to continue to put, put it out there and we, we definitely will get it. Our highest priority, again, is the residential collection because if you have a problem, we, we haven't seen a real problem until we start leaving residential collection garbage on the street. So that's why that is our highest priority. Not that yard waste and bulk collection isn't, but given the operational limitations that we're facing, this is the process that we're, we're going through now.
And we do thank you for the challenges and how well you have done with your team, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else has a question or observation, of course? Yes, other councilmen's turn.
What will we be doing for those workers that are being put on the line to go through these extreme extremities? Are we making sure some type of support system for, meant to some support system there for them so they can have some resource when they are just going through some tough times with the demands that have been placed on them?
Well, we encourage all our employees to stay in contact with the Human Resources Department. There are a lot of challenges out here, not only on the job, but I'm sure off the job. That is why we have, and I thank the council for its support on this, that we continue to pay our employees their salaries regardless of whether they are rotating or, you know, whatever their work schedule is. We also will be launching a lunch on a weekly basis for our staff utilizing the restaurants and the food trucks that are central to Rocky Mount, Rocky Mount only. And that's a way to also support the small businesses within the city of Rocky Mount. So we do stay in contact with, with our employees. I think the department heads do an outstanding job of reporting if there are problems or issues that they're seeing, and we address them, you know, straight away.
Anybody else?
I just have one thing. Madam manager, I'll give you information as to city work side of collection as well. So I'm just, I'm not asking for a move. I'm just asking for consideration.
Yes.
Case by case.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, madam manager. I will move on now to item seven, which is presentations and recognitions. So the proclamation of the city of Rocky Mount, whereas the week of April 13th through the 17th of 2020 has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate the Community Development Block Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. And whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, affordable housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low and moderate income people. And whereas the home program provides funding to local communities to create decent, safe, and affordable housing opportunities for low-income persons. And whereas these two valuable programs have made tremendous contributions to the viability of the housing stock, public services, and the economic vitality of the city of Rocky Mount community. Now therefore, I C. Saunders Robertson, Jr., mayor of the city of Rocky Mount, hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through 17th of 2020 as Community Development Week in the city Social distancing.
I didn't want to go too complicated.
I wouldn't say that.
I didn't copy that.
Okay, the second proclamation of the city of Rocky Mount, whereas April 2020 marks the 52nd anniversary of the Fair Housing Act of 1968 and the 37th anniversary of the State Fair Housing Act of 1983. And whereas the State Fair Housing Act of 1983 and the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968 and the Rocky Mount Fair Housing Ordinance prohibit discrimination in housing due to race, color, religion, sex, nationality, handicap, or familial status. And whereas all North Carolinians have the right to live in the community of their choice without fear and on the same terms as their neighbors. Whereas the Rocky Mount Human Relations Commission, through coordinated efforts with the North Carolina Human Relations Commission, fair housing organizations, concerned citizens, and the housing industry promotes broader housing choices in Rocky Mount, understanding the State Fair Housing Act and the Federal Fair Housing Act to encourage integrated communities and or neighborhoods and works to ensure accessible housing for the disabled and to eliminate discrimination in housing. Now therefore, I C. Saunders Robertson, Jr., mayor of the city of Rocky Mount, to hereby proclaim April 2020 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Rocky Mount and commend this observance to all citizens. Okay. Item A, which is petitions to the public, will not be held due to the safety of citizens and council and staff pursuant to the Governor's social distancing order for COVID-19. Which brings us to item nine, consideration of the minutes and recommendations from a regular scheduled planning board meeting held March 10th of 2020. Overview of requests and recommendations by the Director of Development Services or his designated. This is the public hearing. Right?
There was a recommendation to the board.
That's right. So I'll need a motion. We can go through and read this. All right. Motion made by Blackwell, second by Joyner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We will defer the consideration of the public hearing, which is item A, nine A. All right. Item 10, left blank intentionally, this item was removed to be placed on the April 27th, 2020 agenda. Which brings us to item 11, which is consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the Code of the city of Rocky Mount entitled Administration, Article 4, entitled Emergency Management. Recommendation is to adopt the ordinance. Do we have a motion? Move. Moved by Joyner. There's second.
Second.
Second made by Knight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 12 is consideration of petition for annexation, number 316, which is 3786 Weatherford Street. Recommended action is to acknowledge the receipt of the petition and to, to adopt resolution ordering city clerk to investigate sufficiency of the petition.
Can I get clarification? The address that we have on the request from the manager is 3786. If you go down to the deed and the other things, it's 3817, so.
Which is it?
Which is it?
So I asked for that clarification as well. I was told that the, the address on the agenda is correct. This is property that was gifted to them.
But does it make a difference if the, what we're passing in, in the documentation, that this has two different addresses? I guess is my next question.
Well, the legal instruction, you know, is it in the legal.
There is.
Well, if, if the city attorneys.
Well, it's coming back to you, right?
This is just to acknowledge the city clerk to adopt resolution so she can investigate sufficiency of the petition.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is that a motion, counselman Daughtry?
Yes, that's a motion. Sure, that's why I was asking the question.
Motion made by Daughtry, is there a second?
I have second.
All right, second by Blackwell. Any discussion, any additional discussion? Having said, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by like sign. Item 13 is consideration of application for one, a new taxi rights license for Melvin Hines. Recommended action is to approve issuance of a new taxi rights license as recommended and authorize the city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city.
The move.
Moved by Knight, second by Joyner. Is there any discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by like sign. Motion passes. Item 14 is consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code of the city of Rocky Mount titled Buildings and Building Resignations, Article 4, entitled Building Construction Standards, Section 5-109, entitled Electrical Code Adopted Additional Requirements. It amends ordinance to refer to the current electrical code as adopted by the state and removes additional requirements to modernize and update standards for consistency. Recommended action is to adopt the ordinance. Is there a motion?
So move.
Moved by.
By Bullock.
Second by Blackwell. Okay. And then with that said, discussion, counselperson Miller?
Yes. My concern is for the safety of individual homes downtown in those buildings. And secondly, I understand that it would reduce, I'm scared of a neck bump here, I don't want to. It would reduce the cost to go first, revitalize. It would reduce the cost to go first renovate buildings, but at the same, at the same time it will decrease the risk to those people who have invested properly in the building business. If you have a fire down now, those old structures going in a heartbeat.
What did she say?
I, well, I, I would echo, uh, I would echo Councilwoman Miller. And I guess to, um, to Mr. Deacon, I would ask, is the Fire Marshal reviewed the proposal? And why are we reducing the fire district instead of increasing it? Um, and to echo what Councilwoman Miller said, out there are old, um, wooden framed interior, um, buildings, um, they're two-story, usually on the bottom of the story is a, is commercial, which is my understanding, commercial is required to do that upstairs are going to be residents. If you do have a fire, and I think that's a safety hazard, and, um, it's going to put the people living on the second floor at risk. And, um, and I guess the big thing is, uh, has this, the Fire Marshal been consulted?
Yes, yes, uh, we are not reducing the, uh, the boundaries of the fire district. That's just to show you the scope of, of where this is effective. So back, that map for reference is when, um, we adjusted this in two thousand and fourteen, the fire district itself, but our electrical code had additional standards for that. And, uh, in that specific area required to be maximum, which was metal jacketed conduit, rated cables, the whole nine yards. If you read it literally, it would say, you know, inside a cinder block wall or inside enclosed walls. So we want to reference to the, the latest code, our, our current code reference, uh, two thousand and five electrical code, they're, they're well beyond that. So we want to reference that to be consistent. And we have checked with other jurisdictions asking about this when this kind of came up. And they said, what, what do you have these extra, uh, requirements in there? What's the purpose? You can still do that when it is required to be based on the code, and that's what we will do, but we're not going to require the maximum extent for every project.
But address my question about commercial, please. Cause commercial is required to do that, correct? In commercial building?
It depends, it depends on, it's case by case on how to do that.
So you're giving flexibility to make your decision based on state code? And then you're, we're not relinquishing people from being responsible about renovating buildings, the quality of the materials, or the level of, um, investment they're making as far as what meets code and what protects public safety. But what we're also seeing, which I can speak to knowledgeably, is that Rocky Mount has a reputation in eastern North Carolina of being overly, um, overly hard on small business investors, overly so, such that our codes are stronger and more spitting than everybody else's. Everybody's downtown is all burned down. You know, the light switch turns on the same, it's the same materials, it's the same property. So my question to you is, are you aligning our, um, ordinances with other ordinances in other cities that are the size of Rocky Mount and that are obtaining the same types of goals? It seems to me if we want to incent downtown development, we can't make it so hard to develop downtown that it doesn't get done.
Correct. Um, just turn that on for you. Uh, we, we certainly looked at the other groups, our, our chief building inspector called around, asked around when he came in, because when you do normally look through this, it's, the additional requirements didn't apply to ninety-nine point, you know, whatever percent geographically of the city. So this came through and he started asking questions around and got with the chief, Fire Chief. So, you know, do we need to do this? And there are some cases, yes, it is that, you know, stringent requirement is still going to be required, but we want to revert back to the state electrical code, the most recent adoption. So those people that are developing have a consistent, um, look, so they're turning in plans with sealed drawings and everything, and they're basing on theirs, and we're not aware that we have this extra requirement, which is, uh, significant and higher than what the state has adopted. So we wanted to sort of mesh that with the state and be consistent with others.
Now, the plans are approved per your review and planning department.
Yes.
Plan board. So if it's a case where it needs to be done, it would be pointed out, correct?
Absolutely.
And I don't think any of us are in the professional environment. Uh, that's why we have a chief, and if the chief agreed with you and your perspective in the ruling of the state's, uh, requirements, then I have no problem with it.
You know, I was looking also when we had this long line fire downtown in the inner city, the multiple people died.
She talking about when Atlanta happened, near which was a home.
That wasn't... That was due to...
They said it was not personal, I understand.
No, it was a private residence.
Private residence.
Abandoned property.
Yeah, it was an abandoned, uh, home.
Typically, um, if I may, most of the fire district regulations typically relate to, um, stick-built structures and the amount of that. So this electrical was just a little bit far and beyond. Uh, at the time, I think it was reasonable and, and required, but, uh, those additional requirements do not mesh with the latest adoption of the code from the state.
So we are not lowering our standard beyond the state, but we're really making some adjustments.
Adjustments to be more consistent.
With the state.
With the state and others throughout the state.
Well, we are lowering our stake, we are lowering the bar, and I hear you, the Fire Chief is saying you consult with not the Fire Marshal.
Well, we would, uh, we asked, we went through this process as we had a couple come in.
That's a difference.
That had their, um, plans architecturally, you know, stamped and sealed and said, you know, we're following this code. Uh, this is requiring us to, uh, within, within a wall. Now, exposed wiring, you're still going to have to meet, you know, the advanced criteria. So it is a case by case, but to have someone redo a wall and close the wiring, um, usually the metal jacketed is for, uh, strikes or anything to, to stop electric shock and just stop the spark, but if it's within a cinder block or brick wall, it's, it's an added expense that, um, is higher and above than what is only required.
Wondering how one developer, another developer is doing if you all haven't received the, uh, official plans from, uh, the developer. So it sounded like to me, in reference to what one of the council members stated, it's based upon hearsay. What if somebody's doing this, suppose what somebody's doing this? I'm doing this to my project, but now they're not doing this to their project. Uh, it's two different projects, but I'm clear on that. And my understanding, if we are not, um, putting anybody in safety, uh, uh, or harm's way, unsafe, um, environment or in harm's way, then I don't have a problem with it if it's according to the state, uh, uh, code.
Can I ask just a hypothetical question? I, I'm assuming you're, and I just want clarification, if you go into the state and the surface is particularly old, doesn't meet the current state codes, you're going to require the service to be put in to be new. Depending on what the use of the building is, you may or may not require conduit to be used. Um, so if the occupancy is going to be apartments upstairs, retail down below, uh, depending on what's being sold, combustible nature, et cetera, you know, that would all have impacted to the proper terms of the process.
Yeah, there's layers and layers.
Sure.
We, you know, we have old knob and tube, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna make you advance up to, to some, uh, RoMAX at least. And then from there, the type of use indicates the, the expands and the protection that you would need, and all that spelled out with that state code.
Okay.
What all the cities are using this state code, uh, about about that? You say you live in...
I would say everybody, I would hope. Uh, they may, they may...
Everybody in Rocky...
Yeah, they may be using it, but they, they may have referenced an older code at some time, but, uh, I believe it's twenty seventeen, the latest.
Any other questions from Deacon? No. All right, we have a motion for the second. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign.
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion passes.
I thought it was no for the record.
All right, Councilman Miller, Councilman Daughtry, it should vote a no for the record. Which brings us to item fifteen on the agenda, which is consideration of declaration declaring certain city-owned or personal property, which is one Derek truck, V, as in Victor, four-four-seven-three Altech model on a two thousand and five International seventy-four-hundred S surplus and authorizing disposal by donation to Nash Community College to be used in their electric lineman training program includes the clawback agreement in the event the lineman certification program ceases to exist. Recommended action is to adopt the resolution declaring property surplus and authorize donation and authorize the mayor to execute the clawback agreement on behalf of the city. Do we say? Moved by Bullock, second by Daughtry. Is there any need for discussion? All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by like sign. Okay, item sixteen is consideration of the following recommendation from the traffic engineer, that's to adopt a no parking anytime on both sides of Ravenwood Drive from west of Raleigh Boulevard to Recreational Drive. Recommended action is to adopt the ordinance amending the traffic control ordinance map. Do we have a motion? All right, uh, motion by, uh, Councilman Bullock, is that a second for Miller?
Second.
All right, is there a need for discussion? All in favor, just about to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by like sign. Seventeen, we agreed that we were gonna not to, that was going to be pushed out to the next, to subsequent meetings. Item eighteen is consideration of municipal agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation to add pedestrian signals that signalize intersections on Sunset Avenue between Turk Street and US three oh one at an estimated cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. City will be reimbursed eighty percent of the eligible expenses up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Recommended action is to approve the agreement, authorize the mayor, city clerk, and finance director to execute the same on behalf of the city. All right, we got a, uh, motion by Miller, second by Bullock. Is there any need for discussion?
Well, I'm, I'm certainly in favor of this, but I'll go back to what I've, um, mentioned earlier about Sunset Avenue, um, more down between, um, Winston Road and North Old Carriage Road, but there's no, really no sidewalks, uh, no signalized intersections. In fact, I went for a bike ride with my wife yesterday across from Sunset, who took her lives in her own hand. Um, there's no grocery stores in Ward five, and we have, um, Little Easternburg right down the street where people walk. And I would like for the city manager to look at that area, um, to help enhance the pedestrian traffic, because a lot of, uh, people are having to walk to go to the grocery store and don't have access to it. And in addition, I've mentioned before over there by mall, Walmart slash Chick-fil-A, Zaxby's, that whole area over there, um, especially on, on Sundays, a lot of people are walking and crossing the street there, which is a hazard. And we really need to pay attention to pedestrians because we don't need an accident to occur. I fully support this, but I would like for other areas to be looked at. Uh, and I guess I question, why can't we add to it, or is there a limit of what this is right here, um, being offered by the state?
Sunset Avenue is a NC state-controlled street, and our transportation lines are really trying several times to get a different plug into it. We've got several times.
I appreciate that, it's just, I hope you hear what I say.
Yep. Any additional discussion? Thank you, Councilman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by like sign. Which brings us to item nineteen, is consideration of community block development grant agreement with the Rock Mountain Housing Authority relative to the Down payment assistance program. Recommended action is to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager, director of community and business development, finance director, and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right, moved by Knight, second by Twinter. Is there a need for discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by like sign. We were having discussion on items twenty and twenty-one. Councilman Daughtry should focus to the constitutionality of twenty and twenty-one, and ask that, so we move this to the next meeting until that question can be answered. And, uh, I stopped the conversation just to, uh, to get to this point in the agenda. And I, I'm not sure where we are. Perhaps Jeff, could you speak to that, um, at least in terms of...
Before you speak?
Yeah, please, yes.
I think we should move forward with, uh, development of downtown, and it's, uh, to be placed on the, uh, if, if there's anything that's not legal or anything that we approve is not correct, then you should come back and, and let us know.
Well, that's what we were having to look at.
Right. So I think we should move forward with the recommendation of our city manager.
Can I ask the manager to speak about what her perspective is related to why we need the program and what you're asking us to do?
Sure. Excuse me, with the, um, downtown business assistance program in particular, um, currently the policy requires that there be a, um, CO or that the property qualifies for CO in order to be eligible for the, uh, program. What we're stating here is that oftentimes, when you have, um, properties that are in such bad condition, it's very difficult to, um, say that this property right at this moment, uh, is ready for occupancy. And so this gives the flexibility for the, um, administrator of the program to allow for the, um, uh, funds to be made available, uh, to the developer. And, uh, the city will secure its program, its, its contribution by deed. So we're not really out of anything, but it does help to, um, assist a developer, uh, with continuing to, um, you know, make advancements in terms of, of the, uh, work that they're doing on their building.
Just out of curiosity, um, how does that, how was the contractor decided, or did they come to you, they make a grant for this or make application? What's that process look like?
Yes, this is a program that's administered, uh, in the community and business development, uh, office or department. And, uh, they make application, the application is reviewed, um, by the staff there, and then they make their recommendations for, uh, approval. So that's basically how it's done.
And the deed would, uh, help the city secure our investment, correct?
Exactly.
In other words, if we didn't do that, then...
The property becomes ours.
Correct. I fully support that.
And we do show how these grants, uh, generate multi-level type of growth downtown, right?
I would say that, um, for the past two years or so, and I've seen it pick up, uh, wouldn't you say, Assistant City Manager? Uh, particularly over the last year when we have really, um, put this out there in the community, in the downtown community. So this is exactly the kinds of things that you want to see happen. We have to incent, uh, developers and potential developers for coming here, just like we do, um, for the larger industrial, uh, recruitment that is done in the city.
With the OD that we ask them other than what they expect to create jobs.
Correct.
And my, my support for this revolves around the fact that, um, Rocky Mount runs on small business, even if we have great industrial partners, you know, Rocky Mount, like every other city in the United States, depends on small businesses. And in our downtown community, um, we have highly prioritized building out downtown. In fact, we, uh, adopted a pro forma around the event center that depends on downtown being developed. We can't meet our pro forma requirements with the event center without making downtown work. And, um, I'm, I'm pleased to see that, um, the manager's office is looking forward and looking at how to, um, help incent new investors downtown and still secure the city's position of liability. I think that corrects a lot of problems that we had in the past.
I don't know if, um, the Assistant City Manager wants to add anything to that.
Uh, yes, Councilman Miller, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, if the event that we represent here does not all group, not legal... Yes, if the event that we represent here does not fall through legal action, it requires the city to secure this, take it out of the property. Could Jeff speak to that, please?
Should we, well, what is the legal process for the city to take control of the property?
Well, there will be a deed of trust and a note and a contract, and if there's a fault, we'll close on the property.
So protect the city's interest?
Well, the city will invest their money, and that's money, our money, and if, you know, they sell it and they, they get the money back, presumably it will promptly, you know, report to the, the advantage, but it'll wait for the amount. Let me, let me raise one other issue, since we're talking about that security. If you look at the, if you look at the recommendations, they talk about the contract of the city, and then there's a comma, and then there's a language about the promissory notes and the deed of trust for twenty-four months. I don't see that language when you get down to the policy.
The contract.
The contract.
Correct. So we need to implement that into policy, correct?
I don't know whether that's the intention, or the note type, or what, but there's no provision about security.
At this time, it needs to be in the policy.
So can we add that same, same language to the policy?
You have to add that last clause, which, which provides, if you see what I'm, if you, if you see what else, may councilman adopt it.
Well, as a small business owner, proponent of downtown, as I am downtown, I'm in favor of anything that we can do, but I also think that we need to be prudent in our actions. And that, I'm raising a question that I read, and I think is applicable to this one and the next one. And I would agree with the attorney, because I was gonna bring that up if this moved forward. And I also think that, I mean, we're putting, we need an answer to it, we're also giving grants, and we have given grants in the past, that goes against what I think the state constitution has presented in these articles, but we also, if, if we want this, if we want downtown to move, why are we gonna give someone a grant, then also, if we wanted to go quickly investments in downtown, why are we giving twenty-four months? Twenty-four months is two years. I, I don't understand. And, you know, if we're gonna give the city money to invest in downtown, which again, I, I think there's a question there, why twenty-four months? And, and we're doing credit checks on the people to make sure that they, they have the funds to outfit and to redo a building if we're gonna invest our money into that? So we do not have to go through a securing the buildings?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Proton, members of Council, Natasha Hampton, Assistant City Manager, this is a matching grant. The ten thousand dollars that the city provides also has to be matched by the applicant. In addition to that, some of the severity of the buildings in downtown vary. So depending on the amount of restoration needed and revitalization needed on the buildings, we, staff felt that twenty-four months would provide for some of these buildings that are more severe in rehabilitation efforts than others.
Do you get, do you get the money, as the small business person, do they get the money before they invest the money, or how does that work?
It says the, the applicant has to spend, and the city rebates based on the spend.
So the, the applicant would have already made the investment?
That is correct.
So it's no need for?
Right, so it's no need for a credit check, you know, because you've already put the money in.
That's correct.
Right.
Does the purchase of the building count for that investment?
Does the purchase of the building count for the investment? Don't you match with the work, not the building?
Right, the, this grant is based on the, the building repair.
I think to me that this would help incent and continue to move our downtown forward. And I, again, I just have an issue with it.
Okay, so I think I'm looking for either a motion.
So moved.
Second. To table?
To pass the motion. With the, with the?
Language.
Friendly amendment to update the language in the policy with the whatever.
Is that right, that's, that would match, right? I've got a motion here to approve as the policy with the caveat that the policy and the actual loan documents match in terms of covenants required. And I have it second by Councilman Knight. And then is there a need for discussion, additional discussions?
Absolutely, absolutely, like, well, I assume that? That's an idea, that's for amendments.
Yeah, amendments, right.
What would part of that amendment possibly be accelerating the time going from twenty-four months and reducing it down, since we're very anxious to get downtown moving?
Would that be?
Listening to the staff, I think they already vetted that and came up with that twenty-four months based upon what they have already experienced, so.
And you don't get the money to be spending, right?
Right.
So. They can put people in a position to try to move faster on, on development than they move safe. So given that time.
Just to make sure, there's a lot of confusion here. I've gotta spend the twenty thousand dollars before I get ten thousand dollars in every, every possible scenario, whether it's one year, two years, I have up to two years if I've been approved, but I have to prove to you that I have spent twenty thousand dollars before I get the ten back.
Yeah, you spend, you spend that twenty, but you, you may need to do a lot more work.
Sure, no, I understand, maybe a hundred thousand dollars where it's done, yeah, I get it.
That's correct.
And you have to have a CO before the money is given.
Well, that's what the amendment is.
Changing it.
Yeah, we're changing it.
Okay.
Because the improvements that might be needed are needed prior to CO being accomplished. So maybe twenty-four months to get the CO, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the amendment in this item allows for the city manager to determine or authorize the advancement of the rebate before certificate of occupancy is obtained, which is the current structure of the, the BAP program.
Okay, but you're not relinquishing the other protective aspects of the city's assets?
That is correct. You're not.
So really, all we're asking, all you're asking, rather than I, all you're asking us to adopt is to release that CO requirement on the front end before receiving the money, and put it on the back end, and then if it's not done, even if they spent the twenty thousand dollars and we matched it with ten, if the CO was not obtained, then we can still go into foreclosure and recoup our investment and proceed with someone else with that property development.
That is correct.
Building will be recouped.
No, I understand, if, if, if I actually choose to foreclose.
I'm saying we had to do that, you know, because again, it was.
Okay, well, then I have a motion on the floor.
Yes, sir.
And I have a second. Is there any additional discussion?
Of course.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Daltry's opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one, consideration of the resolution approving administrative policy number two five three six entitled Policy Residential Fassade Improvement Grant. And recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Knight, second by Blackwell. Any discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, again, I have the same reason I gave earlier, and I wonder why this is gonna be administered under the Human Relations Department. And then it's, we're gonna assist five property owners in a year for twenty-five thousand dollars. That's, it's significant if you get it, but there's no matching. And I even think there was a councilman that used the term earlier to have skin in the game or leverage, and I don't think there's anything here except for providing money. And, and then it indicates also, I've got a question, because it says property owners whose property is located within the designated boundaries and or designated neighborhoods are eligible, but I don't see a map or where, where it's indicated.
Kathy, that's probably important.
Mayor of City Council, City Manager, Archangel, Human Relations Director, we have a number of neighborhood, organized neighborhood association that recognizes, open to human relations that we already work with, and we have some original funding that was allocated for a beautification project. This is just in the effort to allow the current funding to address additional needs, just in case those, those funds are not spent. Those neighborhoods will have to be, homes will have to be residents of, homes that are fifty years or older, which is currently a part of the program that Community and Business Development has already approved, so funded for repairs. So in a way to kind of pick up some of the gifts that may have been left there, if there is some funding left in this part of money, those same individuals would be able to apply for this facade grant to also address some of those needs.
Do I just know that one neighborhood exists that are included in this?
We have all the neighborhoods that are currently recognized or work with the Human Relations Department. There are eighteen neighborhoods that they range in, and we're up from Southeast Rocky Mount, South Rocky Mount, North Green, Hillsdale, all across the city. And majority of those neighborhoods rely, rely on the downtown area, and they represent property owners who have properties that are fifty years or older. But there is an exception where if you are not in one of those neighborhoods, but you are recognized by the city and human relation, you may also still qualify under those guidelines.
Yeah, we need to change the language, we need to include them.
I would work with a lot of these neighborhoods, and these neighborhoods have worked extremely hard to make these improvements, and whatever necessary language we need to change, we don't need to hinder these neighborhoods from moving forward with the beautification that they're doing.
Can we get a list of those neighborhoods? I mean, that doesn't feel like an unreasonable request, if we're gonna map that out to the resolution, then it should tie out, unless the criterion is that the house is fifty years old or older.
Correct.
Oh, so that's the only criterion, the house has to be fifty, the structure has to be fifty years or older?
You either have to be one of the, there are a couple of criterias there. You either have to be in a recognized neighborhood association in those boundaries, and or you have to be in a resident that's fifty years old.
So if I'm, if I'm in a designated neighborhood, I could be, my house could be inside of fifty years and still?
Correct.
Be eligible.
Yeah.
If I'm outside of that, then my house has to be fifty years old or older.
Correct.
And that's pretty consistent with most of the housing stock in Rocky Mount.
Exactly.
And it's, and it's only five, we can fund up to twenty-five thousand dollars, right? This is what you're asking?
With existing funding, and then we can do up to five, and maybe if the funds are a little bit less, that's what we said, up to five, we may do two or three, but we're trying to make the most as be the use of funds that is available, and within a budget year.
So is the language on section two, page two, top of the page, should that be admitted, or is that part of it? I think it's just maybe where we copied and pasted a neighborhood beautification program and then deleted out.
Can you read it?
It's where the page of, of this section that we're on, of the residential facade improvement grant, page two, are you following me?
Mm-hmm.
Funds are available, also available through the neighborhood beautification program to assist the neighborhood organization subdivisions with entrance points, signs, and other types of beautification projects. And then, and then, again, are we gonna either take out the designated boundaries or, or make it just so it's fifty?
Well, for clarification, the original funding was for that purpose, and as we're working through the process of trying to address a, a blanket policy that would represent every neighborhood, originally we talked about the possibility of beautification projects, the subdivisions within our neighborhoods. If you look at our older neighborhoods, we only have probably one or two subdivisions that will, that are actually there, a lot of our neighborhoods have several points of interest. So trying to put together a policy or program, we have just to address those, those neighborhoods with kind of challenges. So we still have those funds available, and we can address the, the neighborhood signage issue with the current funding, where if there's funds that's left out of that pocket of money, and we can go back and assist some of those original applicants that Community and Business Development was able to help, but still have some existing needs, this funding could cover that same, same gap.
Okay, I believe I have a motion on the floor, I have a second. Is there additional discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, Councilman Miller?
There's quite a bit of discussion earlier, especially comments from the city manager about the need to have the control central, so we're trying to do an additional grants. This will be decided all by the Human Relations Department, and so will those also be centralized under the city management?
That, that, that particular organization restructuring that I spoke about earlier is, is still under advisement, but certainly we would want to include any and all loans and grants that are made available to the public from the city. So they would do, in other words, the department would do the paperwork, and we would ensure that they're meeting the eligibility requirements for the grant, and, you know, just go from there. So this isn't a loan, this is a grant, and that would be the difference.
Okay, would the, would this be the facade grant for residential area? And the facade grant, to me, means the appearance of the exterior, typically as it plus the roof. What, is there any requirement that the house have a good roof on, and are any of those things that preserve the integrity of the building?
If you notice in?
Go ahead.
If you notice in one of the guidelines, we talked about properties that are already been approved through Community and Business Development for some repair work, and so those properties that we are looking at would also be a part of that same, same group.
So they will be clawbacked to separate and plus sources?
If the need is there, because we have a lot of projects out there that, there are still, once the original home repair program has exhausted a limited amount of funds, there are still some properties in our older neighborhoods that still have some existing needs.
Thank you for the questions.
Well, that's where we are. Are there any additional questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
I bring this to item twenty-two, which are appointments, the only new appointment that I have is for Stephen Larry Cedarburg to fill a month and expired term, which expires on June thirty, twenty twenty, for the Business Development Authority.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Miller, is her second, second by Joyner. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright, that's a motion and second by everybody. Blackwell, Joyner, all opposed, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jeff, can you look into the constitution, man, I'll do that for you.
Yes, I will. I don't know. I've got some old, 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 but I'm having to.
Thank you.
Saying my Bible, my God.
Was that your Bible?
Yeah.
They sound blessed.
Take care, please do it.
We have enough public comments.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need a process.
Yeah, we have made the.
This is, this is gonna be just like this, and you're always talking about, right?
Yeah.
We pick this because it's supposed to be the people, people, people.
Yeah, we want that to.
That's right, that's right. That's right, that's right. No, 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 I'm just, I'm, I think you're flexible, what you like.
I think it makes more sense to keep them downstairs, because the plug would be easier to bring them all the way up here. And you just have a podium down there with a camera on there that we can see.